Chief.
Go ahead.
You mentioned reducing the fee to strictly the waste pickup amount. The resolution still says fifteen dollars, so...
Well, you know, last year, last year I used that. There was a lot of controversy around that. And at this stage, there's a couple of things in here that needs changing. Because like I say, this resolution is written to break even. You cannot break even under this system. Because someone would have to front the money to pay them while we're waiting for the taxes to come out. So I think there's a lot of things in here that needs to be taken care of.
But we have a year to...
We also don't know how to make up the homestead exemption. Because we're not getting a discount from Waste Management.
There's a calculation, Esther.
To Waste Management?
Oh, it's calculated in house here.
Yeah, the one forty-one. But I'm saying it's not calculated by Waste Management. They don't charge different prices for different collections.
No, that's not the question at hand, but...
That's the point though.
So this is gonna be fifteen dollars then? You're gonna keep it fifteen dollars?
No, I just said...
So we're gonna change it then?
I just said a hundred forty-one sixty-three a year. I mean, we certify this by the...
Okay, well, it still says fifteen there, so this needs to be adjusted.
Like I said, there's something that needs to be changed about this ordinance. Last year, we went by this and there was a lot of flack. Because we didn't do the actual calculation. I did the actual calculation, so it's your pleasure.
What's that number again?
We can use the fifteen, one forty-one. We can use the fifteen dollars if you wish. Or we see it's one forty-one fifty-three.
One fifty-three a year?
Yes. This is how we certify by annual.
Yeah.
Then we divide that by twelve, eleven dollars, something, so fifteen dollars.
And that's for the non-homestead?
That is the rate.
That's the flat rate, so then...
Homestead pays one half.
Right.
Correct. They pay one half of that to homestead.
So since we have those numbers, we just need to go back and run a calculation and figure out how much it would be for non-homestead, how much it would be for homestead.
Well, I did that.
You also...
So then what'd that come to?
Paying for the homestead.
Well, I gave you the spreadsheet. Has parcels at the top?
Uh huh.
So on the homestead column, you have their share. Under the non-homestead, I have others. So those are the amounts that we certify based on the category.
Yeah, that's the number of parcels.
That's the number of parcels. But keep in mind that in terms of the calculation, it was eighty-eight and four parcels used. Because it's not a pure one hundred, it's not congruent for every level. For example, the double homes, we charge twice as much. Triple homes, I mean, three family, we charge three times as much. And the homestead is commensurate with that. So they pay one half of that three times. One half of the double, or one half of the single. So you can do the math and see that's where it came out to.
So did you, what did, did you do the math?
I did the math.
So then what does it come to for a single, a double?
I gave it to you. I mean, this is the total, okay? So you wanna know by each... I mean, just...
How do you wanna word the, um, the resolution then?
I didn't, you know, go into draft or not.
Excuse me, but if we're looking at ten dollars and seventy-nine cents, we're talking eleven dollars versus fifteen. Would it, would, why do we need to change everything in order to salvage three dollars? Does everybody want three dollars back? Is that what we're looking at? Why can't we...
We need that three dollars to make up for the homestead exemption and the delinquencies and the money that we're paying.
Right, so I don't see a reason to change that.
Maybe it's probably more at a loss than we are at taxpayers' loss.
If we're at a loss, then why do we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of surplus in there every year? And gross.
Tell you why?
She just told us why.
Guys, if we're, if we're not charging enough, then why do we keep adding to the balance every year?
We've caught up.
Just think that's very common sense.
You know, we've got common sense.
Okay. Going, moving on to the other assessments, are we okay with this one? And moving on to the houses and the criminal nuisance and the grass.
The other comment I have, um, the last couple of years, actually, some of those were combined. When I got the numbers from service, they combined the housing, the boarding up. The boarding up of the houses, the building violations, it's thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and forty. When I reviewed their listing and like demolitions and that, they include it all on one page. I mean, one, um, section of it. And that's how she sent out invoices. She invoices the whole homes. But they keep it all together. So, and I look back, the last year, it was combined. I think the year before, it had been combined. So there seems to have been the practice, uh, in combining those versus letting separate ones. I'm not sure when the study completed on that practice over the last few years. It has been combined.
So Chief, is the criminal nuisances from the police department, because I would think that that would be a little higher than the number? I mean, are we assessing the property tax for criminal nuisance or for nuisances that are tagged from the police department based on the number of times you're going to a home, as in false alarms? Or as in, you know, now this is becoming a nuisance because the landlord or the tenant or the homeowner is not resolving an issue? Are we doing any of that on, on the tax bill?
We don't do anything with the taxes. We prepare the bills.
You just bill?
We prepare, well, we don't even bill. We prepare the statements in terms of if someone is under nu... We prepare the paperwork for the nuisance abatement, you know, nuisance activity. We send the notices, we comply with the law in terms of the meeting. You have to make, you have to reply back in thirty days. Instead of the meeting with me, I would go over what the issues are with the property so that they have an opportunity to address them. If they fail to set up a meeting, or if they fail to comply with what was agreed to at the meeting, then we prepare billings for the finance department to get sent over there dependent, and they then handle billing. The police department doesn't do billing, obviously, so it becomes...
And if those bills aren't paid, are those bills going to be on the assessment?
Well, they are.
Six hundred dollars worth only?
Yeah, yes, and I brought them all because I knew there'd be questions. A lot of them are like ten dollars, some are twenty dollars. So they're not huge amounts. You may have one at ninety-seven dollars. Maybe one is seventy dollars.
I think we're talking two different things.
See, our ordinance allows you to bill for your time.
Right.
Well, we do, but we bill like a quarter hour on those things. So I mean, like, and, and that's how they handle it. You know, it's, it's, it's that plus a twenty-five percent administrative fee. Prior to changing the ordinance, we used to do a lot more because we would actually bill for the hours we worked for the, for floors and things.
So do we need to revisit these orders?
The purpose of the ordinance isn't to make money for the city. The purpose of the ordinance is to address nuisance properties and get landlords to address the, the bad behavior of their tenants.
Right.
I mean, it's not considered revenue or an income source. So I mean, we can revisit it if you like, but the point is, is that many times if we do something with, somebody falls under nuisance, we meet with them, and believe it or not, they actually comply. Or my roommate goes speak to it better or not, sometimes they actually pay. You know, in the case of Maple Leaf, for example, I sat down with him, negotiated his fees when he first took over and agreed to comply. And it seemed to have an effect. But, you know, we wind up going back through them and adjusting it, but they still paid over a thousand dollars. But they paid it. So if they pay it, it's not assessed to the taxes.
Right.
So many times then what happens is, you know, suppose if it's a nominal amount, I'm assuming they pay it. They really, once we send that over to finance department, we don't really stay involved in what happened to it, other than what we sent. We do have a file in the ordinance which is what we send the amounts.
Any other questions on that? And the grass, grass assessments and those? Any questions on that? I mean, that's...
I don't have any questions. I'm just saying this is what we're presenting for certification. These are the homes that had grass cut per the building department. That's the only documents we have. And so, based on that, we prepared a list, um, the injunction building. Because none of this is, you know, we in the finance does not have, um, we're just a processor. So, you know, I don't, we don't monitor it. They'll just say that these are the folks that have not paid and put them on the taxes, is what we do. Now, you know, this year, there was a lot of calls back about that. So we did take an extra step. I had Melissa actually go to see if the parcel numbers existed. Not so much to determine that it was grass cutting, but we at least wanted to know if the parcel numbers existed in the county, um, codes. So we did that in an effort to try to shore this up a little bit. Because there was lots of calls back to say they were erroneously charged for grass cutting. We probably got some of them. And, um, so we ran them off.
And then I think Irene, we have, are there any other questions for Irene on these assessments?
We still have one more.
Okay. On one of your financial statements, you had some percentages of collection. And I think grass is one of the ones where our percentage of collection seemed to be low as far as what, I'm assuming what is coming back from the county on that?
You know, we're getting the, you know, we're, we receive more back, um, than we bill out, than we pay the landscapers.
Yeah, I know that, but I'll find out.
I mean, you know, a lot of these have delinquencies involved, but our main concern is that we at least recoup our dollars. So in terms of percent of the link, I mean, I don't go after that or anything like that. It's just that we just want to ensure that we keep a record of what we paid the landscaper, um, to ensure that we do get the assessments back. You know, we at least recoup our money.
And then we have the, uh, the tax budget that had to be set down, sent down, and that, that's...
Tax rates.
Tax rates, yes, 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 sorry about that. And were there any questions on that? Did you get an opportunity to look at that? That's pretty much what we've been doing. It hasn't changed at all.
And it probably won't. I mean, it could possibly change, you know, with the latest test, it will probably change. But they're basically the same levels over the last few years, so...
Okay, can we bounce around a little bit then, if you don't mind? Um, okay, if we bounce around and go back to, um, an update of the financial status of the home services system?
Sure, we can do that too. Thank you. I think most of you, I can, we have that, yeah, right?
Okay.
Not yet.
Just checking.
I'm doing the first brain test.
First?
Yes.
I'll start with the finances unless you want to go on the great deals about the hard work.
No, she should do, we'll, we'll let her do that.
Okay, well, as you know, we've been going sort of like month by month. The original budget was through August. And so after August, it's been, you know, whatever monies have come in. So we have good news. When we did our analysis, we really think we have no plan to take us through December.
Yes.
And that's being, because like I say, Ms. Volpan, her staff has really cut the expenditures. You know, we were projecting like about thirty thousand a month. She's at about twenty-four thousand. So that's been saving monies. The budget is, the budget that was approved by this body, um, that you see is just at a high level. And the expenditures as of August thirty-first is what some of the folks ask of now. And the projected is, uh, projection that what we expect to happen between now and the end of the year. Uh, the way that I, as you can see, is two hundred and twelve thousand plus dollars available as of August thirty-first. And the expenditures as of August thirty-first are like a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which is a savings of about eighteen thousand for the first eight months. The second, uh, column for the next four months are the projections. But most of these are hard dollars. For example, the total, the county grants the forty-five thousand, those are hard dollars that we expect to be getting. And it just was left over from the contract. Because it's a reimbursement program and it's usually two-month lag, so this is money. Plus, um, Linda Tell, or I know she won't tell, in here is an addition of twenty thousand dollars through her hard working efforts and advocating and politicking with the county. And so there, she paid the government an extra twenty thousand dollars, so that's included in the forty-five. The first capital snowbank ladies, we have thirty thousand here. And of course, I think we're feeling ninety-nine point nine-nine percent sure, confident that that will come through. Uh, the donations to twelve thousand, these are monies that's already here. Um, the program income is, we projected it at one thousand a month, although a lot of instances has been exceeding the one thousand. And these are the dollars that the seniors pay, I mean, monies that the senior pay for the various meals, transportation, and the having. So having said all that, we're projecting like ninety-one thousand dollars, um, for the next four months. And we figure that we'll be at least a hundred thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand for the next four months to get to the end of the year. And the projected expenses are ninety-six thousand, which of course is a four thousand dollar shortfall, but of course we get eighteen thousand. So we project that there'll be a net savings of thirteen thousand. Now, that includes the thirty thousand from the snowbank, which is the only soft number that's in this budget. So if that does not come through, then that'll put us at a seventeen thousand dollar deficit, which would just take us probably through the middle of December. You'll probably have a shortfall through the middle of December if that money does not come through. But the rest of these dollars are hard dollars. So that's basically what I have.
Well, that amount of money will, that, that we should know about that the first week of October. Right. That's when they will be voting on that. And we'll have an answer, we'll have an answer now.
And then the last column, it just varies the budget, I mean, compared to what we projected as the actuals for the year versus what was budgeted for the year. So as you can see, they would originally budgeted, um, a thousand dollars and become, end up with a thirteen thousand shortfall. So that's a good one. So that's the good news. So we're very hopeful and looking hard to keep the expenses down. And like I say, a lot of fundraising. I think if you look at that, you should be most pleased at that fundraising number. And this is just through August, it's at forty thousand dollars. And we're budgeting nineteen thousand for this calendar year. And of course, there was the residual from the, you know, the year's fundraising, the seventeen thousand that it saved the whole for this year. So it put us in a good place. And now it's like the senior citizens will be hoping to the end of the year.
The Department of Senior Health Services, uh, went to the county for the twenty thousand on our behalf. And, um, Mr. Buddhist came back, well, we'll give you ten thousand this year and ten thousand next year. And we went back and said, if you do that, there'll be, the shortfall will be bigger than we anticipated. So actually, um, our come consul person, Purnell Jones, I called Purnell and I called Kenny Ugo. They both called Armand Buddhist and told them of, they did some research about the program. And, uh, they agreed to give it to us. And which is also unprecedented, is they are trying to get it to us in advance rather than as a reimbursement. They're going to try to, um, we should have it, I believe, in about three weeks. So it'll be upfront money rather than as we do it now with reimbursement.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to commend Linda Volpan and her staff.
Yes.
And everybody who is...
Have a lot to do with it.
Right. And who has worked diligently this year to do everything possible, fundraising, selling bottle tops and everything else, right?
Well, the...
Very, very good job.
And the reason we're doing it is not, it, believe me, it isn't, it isn't for us. It's to keep the services intact, as I've told you many times. And I know some of you agree and some of you disagree. But if you lose the money from the county, and if you lose the money from the area agency, it will never come back. If you lose our department, you, you lose the foundation of the recreation department. We're where, the, we're where, we ran the pool. We ran the soccer program. We did the pumpkin hunt. We did all of the extra things that made it the community, a community. So if you intend to grow those back, we're the foundation of that. So trying to do the best we can, um, you know, to, to keep this a viable service in Maple Heights. We hope you value it. Um, we've had disappointments. Irene and I, uh, went to the Cleveland Foundation and we were denied. And, um, the denial came because we were asking for operation dollars. They don't fund operation dollars. And the very first question they asked us, should I share that with them?
Sure.
The very first question was, do you have the support of the mayor and city consul? And I said, some of them, most of them. And the next question from them was, well, how can you say you have the support of them when they didn't include you in the two thousand fifteen budget? And it was, I, I was taken back. I think we both were. We didn't expect the question. So we told them about hard choices and keeping the police and the fire and the service department intact. But we also told them that, that we felt that there was a great deal of value in what we do. It isn't a bingo hall. It isn't a hall to rent when you need a meeting room. A lot more goes on there. And we take care of a lot of residents of the city of Maple Heights, and none of my staff wants to see the city lose them. They're all set. You don't, you know, as far as, and, and I don't want anybody to think we're working so that we can keep our jobs. All of you and the, most of you in this room, I don't know all of you, but most of you know that I can retire. Okay? Anybody else on my staff has, you know, the opportunity already. Opportunities have been presented to them to go and work in other places. And they have chosen not to do that. And they said, we're going to stay and work and fight and hopefully keep these services open for the residents of Maple Heights. Linda, trust the possibility of the food pantry, what would happen with food? Oh, well, there are two things I was going to mention if you don't mind. One is, um, the need in Maple Heights is greater than, um, what we're serving right now in the food pantry and what all of the, all of the other churches are. The Warrensville Road Community Baptist Church. And you'll forgive me, the church on Stanley, the name is...
A faith community.
Faith community. I'm sorry, I keep calling it friendship, faith community. Pastor, uh, Pastor from that church and Pastor Walker and I met with the Cleveland Food Bank. And we're very pleased to announce that we'll be having a meeting very soon with all of the churches in the area. And, um, Southgate has donated space to us to have a year-round farmer's market for people who are in need. It will be run twelve months a year. The Cleveland Food Bank will be providing all of the food at no cost to all of the produce and fruit, to us at no cost. Southgate will be charging nothing for the, for the facility. And it will be manned all by volunteers, doing it one or two times a month. That will be a great help in, for all of the, those of us, for our ten thousand, almost eleven thousand people that use ours, down to faith community who have, I think, the last time they, they served, I believe, he said forty-five people were there the last time. And Warrensville Road Community Baptist Church and, and some of the other churches that have it. So we're very pleased and we're looking forward to that. We're going to be convening a meeting with all of the churches moving forward with that. All set? All right, thank you. How should I use that? Uh, we are hoping by the end of October, beginning of, I mean, end of September, beginning of October. So that they can, you know, we can have it and be set to go. So when the bad weather goes, we're, it gets ready, we're ready to, we're ready to go. What we needed an inside place. It's going to be, um, one of the storefronts on Southgate Park Boulevard. So, and we'll let you know more about that as soon as it's done. The other thing, uh, that I'm working on is a program that Tony had asked someone to give me a call. It's called Rebuilding Together Northeast Ohio. It's a nonprofit funded by the, um, right now they have a fifty thousand dollar grant from Kahaka County and some private foundations. They will, they, they've asked for Maple Heights and Garfield Heights to be the pilot communities for the program. They're in-home modification programs for disabled, seniors, low-income, and veterans. They'll be doing a small sample of houses in Garfield and Maple, a total of twenty-five. Five of those homes will get ramps put on the front of them. And, uh, right now, I'll be announcing, and I, I'm not going to give you the, I'll give you the dates Wednesday night. Applications will be available at the senior center. Um, I, I have a morning set and an evening set, so people can come and pick up the applications and, uh, and turn them in. There'll be a waiting list after that because there's a big hope that this program is, is in other counties in Ohio. And we hope that it will move forward. Uh, they'll be putting raised toilets in, they'll be putting, um, uh, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide testers, uh, grab bars, taping down rugs that may be a hazard at the house for someone who's disabled. Um, the handrails and a number of other, a number of other items. It will take place on October tenth. Will be the day when all the houses, the, the majority of houses will, with teams of skilled labor and unskilled volunteers going out with them, that will actually take care of them. And I know you'll, you'd be happy to know that, once again, Mr. Chicken will be providing lunch for all the volunteers. My friends at Mr. Chicken, so... And groups for, for Maple can volunteer, even to the line? Yes, we're going to be, we're going to be asking, that they are going to be soliciting volunteers throughout the two communities. I'd need suggestions to them of people, of people to call with Maple Heights Hardware and Frank at Home Depot to see if there would be some skilled laborers that could, could go ahead and help with the work. So we'll need volunteers to register the folks in the morning at, um, October tenth at the senior center. And then back, they'll be coming back for lunch throughout the day as, as they get the work done. So we're really excited about both of those, about both of those. And if the pilot program works, they know that more foundations will be stepping up to, um, to keep people safe and secure in their homes. And I think that really speaks to the fact that, uh, we, we talk about the senior center and people talk about the meals and the, um, the meals that are delivered. But there's much more at the senior center than people realize. There's, uh, everything hinges in this city on the, on the people. We talked about changing the name a long time ago. To what? Never, to another, the other, another, a previous mayor in a previous life. Uh, we were going to change it to the Maple Heights Community Center. And we... You know, it really is. They did not want to, at the time, that city consul and the mayor to not move it forward. We had suggested it to more closely mirror what we do. And I think people need to be aware of the fact that it's much more than just people dropping into, uh... Well, and the sheer numbers of people who are working in other departments. Who, who do that? Where is there enough? You're, everybody's busy, everybody's doing more than, you know, so... Anyway, those are the two programs that we're working on. Thanks for sharing that, Linda, I appreciate that. Mr. Chicken, did you have something to say?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
But now, I want to get with you, um, about the skilled labor. I was fortunate enough when I had my ramp.
Doesn't say you can't get anything, I'm not giving you anything.
You're not giving me nothing? Because the carpenters, you know, they threw my connection at the shimano workers.
And that's the kind of...
They have retired, guy, retired and their apprentices.
Right. I've already approached the retired firemen, some of the retired firemen into electrical and plumbing work. But, but those would be, that would be great. If you give me the name, they'll be happy to contact them and get them on board.
I have a question. Is, is them choosing Maple and or Garfield have anything to do with when you guys applied for the Gregory Foundation grant to the city of Cleveland, where they had the aging in place study?
No, it had, that, it, that was with the Cleveland Foundation, the aging in, but anyway, the, no, it had to do with their demographics. We fit, we fit perfectly with the demographics of the people they're trying to... There's been a big influx recently of veterans. I can't, we, we have a number of them coming to the senior center that are just, just turned sixty, that are, became eligible for the meal. They're, um, they have some, um, there, there's certainly some mental issues because of them, because of serving in the war. And they're, they're assimilating very well into our program. But there's a big influx. We have, uh, the Claire Avenue Apartments. Richard, you, you know that they're renting. Unfortunately, some of the rentals are inappropriate for the people who are moving in, but, um, there, so there's a big influx. The disabled population... The disabled population, there is a considerable disabled population. Senior, we're still at, at around twelve percent of the population, so, and low-income, eleven thousand of our people live two-hundred percent below the poverty guidelines, so with all of those four, we're a, we're not a triple header, a quadra, quadra hit for the, for the program, so.
That's a way that gives us more opportunities for-
It does.
I did talk with, this is deviating from the agenda, I did talk with chief, fire chief Vito this afternoon, who had been unable to, he could have come, but he had paper work to do, but he did say that they are, they hired, and they've sworn in three new firemen, and they also have interviewed all of the safer grant folks and are waiting for background checks. So pretty soon we'll be able to snuff in the fire department, and that, that's a good thing. But if you want to look at the thinking-
And just, and one more, well, just as Irene and I have been working on all this, you know, it, it becomes clearer and clearer to all of us that we do have to look beyond the numbers, beyond what we can afford or what we can't, or that we don't have the money for this, or we don't have the money for that. We have to look at opportunities, the partnerships that are public and private partnerships, and do what we can to, to bring these kinds of programs to the city, and, and I, and I think these are going to be instrumental in turning the city, turning the corner and doing better.
It's, it's positive, very positive. If you want to look at your agenda for the evening, Wednesday evening, if there's anything that we missed, I think there are a couple of things that are pretty self-explanatory, and I don't think we have to go over them. If there's anything else, it's going at eight o'clock, so that won't keep you all too, too much longer. But I did think we needed to go through the assessments and a couple of the other things in order to, to move pretty quickly and, and cause. Any, any questions, any observations, any?
I have a question, if we just backpedal, just like half a paddle.
Half a paddle.
I think, I think it's very important for us to consider the name change of the senior center to the type of community center that encompasses everything that was done in the past as well as now, even though some of the programs were cut. I mean, you know, that is the, the ground floor of what was the rec. department, and I think people don't really go in there and know what some of the services are because of the name of the place, and I think that there would be a lot more people that would be able to take advantage of, where do I get food stamps, how do I go to legal aid, where can I get utility assistance, and, and food and whatever else they do, because they do service a lot of people.
Something to think of.
It might, it might also, it can look a bit busier, and people know that there is place to go, which would probably give us a better handle on trying to get funds.
Could be the Maple Heights Service Center.
Oh, no. Cross that, cross that.
Your suggestion, how much you need investment would be?
I, I haven't given, I, the, when you first mentioned it, I mean, there, there were many suggested at the time. It was the Maple Heights Senior and Family Services, you know, the community center leads it to believe that we're renting it out, and if we're not doing that, that will cause, cause issues. It was, Community Life was mentioned, there, there were many, but I would just say that, you know, give it some thought before, don't rush into it, you know, but give it some thought.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I have one, yeah. Go ahead. Resolution twenty, twenty fifteen fifty-eight? I thought that resolution was going to be introduced by the whole council by the-
Well, we'll be right, one minute. It's going to be, I just did, and Richard's, and we don't know that, but I believe it's on, so they have a way out of it.
Would it, would it get sent out, everyone will be on it that wanted to be?
No, we all agreed to have it.
Okay, not co-sponsored.
Introduce by, it's going to be everybody.
Okay.
Unless she'll want to be.
What'd you say?
Someone doesn't want to be.
Unless you don't, you say unless nobody, unless somebody doesn't want to be on it.
On what?
On the fifty-eight, which is the one for, for these folks.
For the resolution, yeah. No, we all, we all agree to the part of that, yeah.
I have a close friend that has, is a direct immediate friend with the family, so it will go up to Jay Stokes, the wife, so I will report to the friend, and it will go up to the wife.
Okay. So, yeah, very good. Okay, I'll just mention, be our assessment. Okay, thank you, I appreciate all of your input, Irene and Linda, thank you, it's good to know, and this meeting is adjourned at eight, seven forty-five.